Want to welcome everybody to the special council meeting today, Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. And we'll pass it to Clementine to do roll call and make announcements on how the public can participate in public comment.
Yes, Councilmember Barber.
President.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And for the safe attendance of our public meetings, wearing a mask is recommended and encouraged. Please keep your phones and devices in the chamber muted to prevent audio interference with our meeting. There are two ways to participate remotely in today's meeting. You may join us using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. An up-to-date version of the Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864, then enter meeting ID 1607729333. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine, and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please stay within the time limit established for today's meeting. An countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay and on Comcast Channel 25 with up to 90 seconds delay. And we always look forward to receiving your public comment.
Right, and with that, I will pass it to our good colleague here, Councilmember Smith, to kick us off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
You bet. Please stand and join us. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Next, we will go to our public appearance items. And we'll pass it to Clementine to share procedures for speaking on public appearance items.
Yes, everyone is welcome to offer their comments after being recognized by the mayor. The council may limit the time allocated to each speaker. The mayor will request that persons wishing to speak line up at the podium, raise their hand, or use the raise hand function in Zoom to determine the number of persons interested in speaking on each public appearance item. The amount of time for public comment on each public appearance item will be determined based on the number of persons interested in speaking. The maximum time allotted for public comment is 30 minutes on each item. In exceptional circumstances and when necessary to full ensure the full opportunity for public input, the mayor may, with city council's consent, adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or the time allotted to each speaker.
Alright, with that, we will go on to item number one, adopt a city council policy on governance. We'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a little bit of follow-through. We worked already through a variety of issues a few weeks back when we talked about the council policy and council took action on the previous six items. This is item now tonight, seven and eight, which we didn't get to on that particular Tuesday night. And the first one to present the reconsideration policy is our Assistant City Manager, Netros, here.
Great, thank you, Hans, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Here is continuation, as Hans mentioned, of the policy discussion. We wanted to spend a few moments to provide you with a recap. So you'll have a staff presentation on each of the policy items. We'll then ask if council will take any questions of staff and open up public comment, deliberate, and then the goal for this afternoon is to bring back for you on the consent calendar an updated policy which the council can then adopt based on your feedback this afternoon. So on topic number seven, this is the reconsideration policy. As you may recall, the current process is a council member who voted with the majority may vote for reconsideration at the same meeting or at the next regular meeting. And the request for reconsideration must be made in writing. And the motion to reconsider is then agendized for the next meeting. And if the motion for reconsideration is granted, the item then returns on a later date after publishing and mailing of notices. Some of the options council may have is to continue the existing policy. Another option could be to follow the Rosenberg's rules of order. And that essentially would mean that the motion to reconsideration, motion to reconsider would require a majority vote to pass. It must be made at the same meeting, not at the following meeting, and also by a member who voted in the majority of the original motion. So there was some discussion last month about this, and we're bringing this before you for discussion.
Okay. Are there any questions on this one?
No questions. I got a couple of discussion points. No questions.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Alright.
We'll go on to topic number eight, and this is council member interactions with labor unions when negotiations are pending. And I believe we have Brett online with us. Our Human Resources Director Brett Neal.
Hi, how are you? So for this item, we wanted to talk about how a council would prefer to move forward in speaking with labor units with negotiations. Last time we talked about this, I listed some options, which might be council members could establish an agreement on if and how members of council will agree to speak with the union. They could, some options might be not to speak at all during negotiations. Other options might be that council members will listen to the union, but they won't provide a response. And there could be an agreement between council members to disclose all discussions that they've had with the unions and to disclose that to the council members, executive team, chief negotiator as soon as possible as those conversations have taken place. And I believe, and I don't have that information with me, but I believe Chrissy provided a little background from a legal perspective.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members. This is sort of just a self-governing policy. The law does prohibit interactions with represented employees without their designated representative because that could be seen as trying to undermine the representative's exclusive negotiating authority to represent the members and negotiate with the employer. And there may be employees who want to meet with an elected official because they're not happy with how the union is representing them. And we don't want to have it appear that the agency, that the city is interfering with the union's relationship with their employees. And so you could consider a self-governance restriction on having those kinds of contacts or a disclosure requirement during a closed session. You can disclose if you've had those kinds of contacts. Yeah, so if there's any questions, I can answer those.
Any questions, Council? Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. So real quick, Chrissy, is, so that's for the union representative and the represented employee? Or is it just the union representative period?
So let's say there's an employee who's in a bargaining unit, but who's not the designated negotiator for that bargaining unit. And maybe you have a conversation with that employee who is dissatisfied or disgruntled with the way the union rep is negotiating. And that could be construed or misconstrued. I think everyone's intentions are probably good, so I'm not trying to suggest otherwise. But it could be construed as direct dealing in violation of the MMBA. And so it's always advisable that if you're going to have any sort of communication with employees that the designated union negotiator also be present.
Right, so I'm saying if it's just the union representative, that's not an issue. That's my question.
Well, then the issue is more the city as well has a designated negotiator. And so the perception, I guess, could run both ways, right? So typically, our negotiators would prefer to be running the football across.
We got the picture, we got the picture.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody on this side? Alright, I think we're ready for the next one. Thank you. Big Brett.
And then next here is ex parte contacts in quasi judicial proceedings.
So this is also a self-governance type informational item. You may choose to adopt a policy or you may not. Currently, our policy complies with the law, and it's a procedural one. And it's to ensure procedural due process in what's called a quasi judicial hearing. So let's say the council's considering an appeal of a youth permit application or something like that. And maybe you've had communications with the applicant or the appellant. And maybe it's substantive, and that information didn't come out during the hearing. The court cases will say that that is a procedural due process violation because every council member needs to make a decision based on the same information. And the public as well has a right to hear all the same information and not behind the scenes. And so the law requires, and this council complies with this, to disclose ex parte communications that you may have had at the very outset of the hearing. And so we already do that, and we don't need to adopt a policy to say that. But what we did put in the agenda packet were some other policies. If there was any interest in having a written regulation about this or not. It's again, it's not mandatory. You're already following the black letter of the law. But if you wanted to have additional self-governance, there were some samples in here that we put there for you to review and consider.
Any question, excuse me, any questions from the council? Alrighty. We'll move on to the next one.
Alright.
Thanks, Chrissy. It was the third one.
Thank you, Chrissy. Next topic, oops, is meeting management. So the question before you this afternoon is whether the city should continue allowing public comments on Zoom. As many of you may recall, unfortunately, on September 19th, there were over 13 callers called in and spewed hate speech on Zoom. They included slurs, racial epithets, verbal attacks on members of the Jewish faith, African-Americans, documented undocumented persons, and references to neo Nazism and white supremacy. And we were one of several cities that received an increase in anti-Semitic speech during public city council meetings. And we would like to remind you that hate speech is a protected speech if it doesn't disrupt the meetings or rise to a level of a crime. It's very clear that courts have ruled that limits on hate speech would conflict with the First Amendment's protection on the freedom of expression. So there are limitations in terms of of us muting hate speech during during public comment. So the question before you, some of the arguments in favor of continuing online public participation. It's been very clear from those who've called in as well as our residents that the continuing online public comment has been a way for folks to participate in our public meetings. When, when, when they can't because of childcare, there's work commitments. We have folks who it's very difficult for, for individuals to physically be here in the council chambers. And that applies to not only the city council meetings, but planning commission and other, other meetings that we have. This, we've been very proud over the last few years to be one of the first cities to allow online public comment during the early days of the pandemic in March 2020. And, and that continues, and that's been the feedback that we've heard. Some of the arguments against continuing online public participation is that even though it's, it is not legally required, this was a product of the pandemic. It is unfortunately easier for folks to spew hate speech online because they, they can be anonymous, they can use whatever name they want, and there aren't ways to restrict that. And Zoom bombing can continue. We've been lucky enough, however, over the last few weeks not to have additional instances of Zoom bombing. So perhaps this is only a one-time occurrence for us. But it is, it is something that is easy, easy to do from, from the public, as despicable as it is. We have not seen deep fakes yet, so knock on wood, we, we don't have that issue, you know, with it's, it's very easy for anyone to go online, take an audio recording of any of us sitting here at the dais, and, and then turn it into a deep fake and mimic someone else's voice and pretend to be someone else. Luckily, we haven't had that yet, so, so that's good news. But the other comment we have heard from, from some folks is that hate speech, if it does become a regular occurrence, and it hasn't yet, can discourage public participation and potentially, potentially impact the city's business as it did on the 19th. So the policy options before you is to either place a hiatus on public comments on Zoom for the time being and revert to the pre-pandemic practice. There are some cities in the Bay Area that, that have done that. We've counted at least eight different cities in, in the SF Bay Area that have said no to Zoom, they're taking it away for now. And, and some who've said, yes, we want to continue to allow online public comment. The other option is to continue allowing it on Zoom. We're experimenting with limits on the amount of time provided to speakers. And in, in trying that out, we've, we've started that beginning of this month. And so far, it's worked out very well. We do ask in the staff recommendation is that if council does choose to continue to allow public comment on Zoom that it, council authorizes the city manager the authority to pause public comments for 60 days and have a discussion with council for further policy discussion if Zoom bombing continues to or becomes a major disruption to city business.
Okay, any questions from the council? Councilmember Hoffa?
Um, yeah, a couple of questions. So one question I had was like, our options are either kind of get rid of it altogether or kind of keep doing what we're doing. And I'm wondering if an alternative would be to not use Zoom, but to allow remote comments by phone. And my question, I guess, this is something maybe the public can share, whether they think that would be a reasonable alternative. But then for staff, would that give us any kind of more control or any more sort of insight into the users? Because they would presumably at least have a real phone number or not. I guess that's, that's my question.
The, the way that individuals call in and participate on Zoom is similar. We don't actually see the full phone number. When folks call in, we only see the last three digits if they're calling into the toll-free number that's provided through Zoom. So it doesn't really, they can mask, they can, they can use the masking phone number. We can't provide, put limits on, on that. So there really is no difference between either the call-in option or the using the Zoom software option to provide public.
So no benefit to doing that.
That's correct, unfortunately.
And then is it within our legal authority to ask Zoom participants to register? In a sense, maybe not, that information wouldn't be shared publicly, but we would, the staff would know that or not.
The, the city can't require a registration as a precondition of participation. The, the platform itself may have that requirement, but the city government can't require that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Councilmember Smith? Yeah, I wanted to ask, I want to probe a little bit on the, the recommendation that's in here that wants to add with the city manager's discretion to suspend for 60 days. What would the criteria be that would evaluate whether or not we should suspend it by the action of the city manager? And how, how does that then? How does that serve the council where the council might disagree with the findings? So I just want to hear more about staff's recommendations.
Behind this is to, if, for instance, the next regular meeting, we have a barrage of, of hate speech that disrupts the meeting, doesn't allow us to, the, the criteria essentially would be city manager would, would say, okay, next meeting, we will not allow Zoom, but then agendize a discussion with council on, do we still want to move forward with, with the same practice? Or essentially have this conversation again and check in, have another opportunity to check in with, with council. What's, what's challenging is, is we feel the even with, with time limits of, let's say, 30 minutes, you know, if, if for 10 different agenda items, we have 30 minutes each of non-stop hate speech, and this is an extreme example, we have not experienced that yet. It would be helpful to, to give the city manager authority to take a pause on online public comments so that doesn't continue and disrupt meetings.
Okay, so I guess I'm wondering, why would the recommendation be that the city manager do that versus the mayor do that?
That's, go ahead, Hans.
Because we also planning commission meetings, we had HPC meetings, we have other meetings that could be affected by that. And so let's just say we have a planning commission meeting that, that gets Zoom bombed by that. It would basically provide an immediate response to that. And I, I want to be frank with you, I don't love that idea at all. So it, it's just a tool to, to have a fast response there. From my perspective, it's, it's something that, that we, we just give as an option, but it's really nothing that I really love doing because the, the organization of the meeting is, is in the hands of, of the mayor or others. It's just a immediate response idea to, to allow the city manager to, to basically say, okay, we got this happened, let's stop, let's take a pause, what do we want to do? But like frankly, I'm not in love with that idea.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I wanted to hear more, hear more from you on that, but thank you. It's the only question I had.
Did you have something, Chrissy?
Just to add to the conversation just briefly, the idea behind having time limitations is to curtail an abuse, but to continue to have free speech. And so if there's a certain number of people on Zoom that are raising their hands, you can see that from the outset and then say, okay, there's 10 people here. And only those 10 are going to have the opportunity to, to speak. I realize some people like to change their mind midway through a presentation and want to raise their hand, but it sort of balances the risk of that. And the time limitations we put in the agenda are maximum amounts. And so if you say there's 10 people on Zoom, we're going to give them two minutes each, as well as the people that raise their hands in the public, two minutes each. At least you can see how long would you have to endure hate speech? And, and it shouldn't interrupt or disrupt proceeding with the meeting because you can cut off that time at the end. Moreover, if they're engaging in hate speech and it's not related to an agenda item, you know, praising Hitler has nothing to do with the water supply. You can warn the person, get on topic, or we're going to cut you off. And if they don't get on topic, you can disconnect. And so is that a painful process, probably, but it, it might balance both the, the interests at stake? And, and again, the, the time limits we put on here were sort of somewhat arbitrary. Maximum amounts of time, you might say, you know, we don't want to give 30 minutes per public appearance item, we just want to give 15 or, you know, th- those are all policy options for you.
Perfect, awesome. Thanks for the feedback. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. So the city's not required to offer a virtual platform, correct?
That's right.
So how does that requirement or non, non-re requirement impact how we provide access through that, that platform, specifically thinking about registration? Right, can the city then maybe not required for folks to register, but it's implied since the city's not really required to offer Zoom as a platform? Does that make sense? No.
I think if I'm following you, the law prohibits the city from requiring anyone to identify themselves. So you can come speak at the podium and not give your name. You can always ask for someone to provide their name, but they can say, I declined to, to give you my name. And they could come in in a costume, you know, disguise themselves somehow. So the anonymity part is built into the law. And so that, I can't say that there's a it is codified actually in the government code for using online platforms, you cannot require registration. That was a part of the new post-pandemic rules, so.
Specifically because people would be identifying themselves with their.
I think that was the legislative intent behind that, yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. At this point, we'll take it out for public comment. So.
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, and then the, the last, um, item, uh, is, oh, I thought we had another one. Oh, here we go. Um, it's really ten B, and this is, where do you, uh, do you want to allow public comment on Zoom? I'm sorry, uh, I apologize. There's, there was another slide uh, that is missing, but, uh, in the agenda report, we describe options on when do you want to take public comment for items not on the agenda? Do you, would you counsel prefer to have that only in the afternoon or only in the evening or both? As is, is current practice, in the afternoon and evening, one option in order to, uh, allow for more time to get through the afternoon agenda is to only allow public comments for items not on the agenda in the evening session. So that's another policy consideration in front of you this afternoon.
Okay, any questions on, from the council on that part?
Uh, yeah, so I, I want to find, I read that and I wanted to follow along that you, you could do it any kind of way. You could do it at the front as a whole or individual items, but the law requires that the public has access to be able to make a comment on the item before we vote on that.
These are for items not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda, okay. So for items not on the agenda, are you saying that they comment en masse like we do now on items not on the agenda? Okay. What's the gain by doing that? What, what do we gain?
Yeah, because what, the current practice is we have allowed for public comment for items not on the agenda, both at four o'clock and at seven. The gain of having it only in the evening as an example is that, uh, we're not having to open up public comment both at four o'clock and seven. We can only take it at seven, uh, and, and get through the afternoon schedule where we have consent items and, and often close session.
So by doing it in the first session at four o'clock, then you eliminate the potential of having people comment on items not on the agenda again the second time at seven o'clock, which may then eliminate three minutes up to, you know, two hours, depending on the number of people that show up. Um, do you know of any other community in the peninsula that, that does that a different way where and I'm, I'm just thinking the setup of the agenda, we always have consent in the beginning. Um, how do you, how do you answer the call for people who would have a high level of interest in the late afternoon that might show up more? Granted, they're showing up because there's an agenda item, but that tends to bring out more people who then might want to have access to the, uh, local city government. By eliminating them at four o'clock, don't we eliminate people who can't get to work it? Or it can't get off work and it can't get here? Because they don't get off work till five o'clock?
So just to clarify what I hear, the example being is that we would the, it could go either way. We could remove it from the afternoon and only have it in the evening, or we could have it in the afternoon only and not in the evening. And I think the example he was giving was in the evening only, so we would get through the afternoon faster. So I would, my assumption would be that that probably would be the better option out of the two, if that's the direction that we were going in, just because I imagine that there'd be.
Most people can get here at seven o'clock.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, so staff's not recommending one or the other. You're just providing the.
Providing the options for you. We can continue the four o'clock and the seven to answer your question, Councilmember Smith. Uh, most cities in, on the Monterey Peninsula don't have bifurcated meetings at four o'clock and seven. For example, they just meet at six or meet at seven for the regular meeting. So they just take public comment once.
Yeah, okay.
And also there was a time, uh, and Chrissy will remember that as well, where public comments was a different item of the, uh, in a different order in our agenda and was not always the first item.
Right.
Uh, we had councils who put it at the end of council meetings because that's how they preferred it.
So, so a couple of things, um, if you don't mind, I'll just throw in here also for your consideration. For example, um, the city of Berkeley will allow public comment for items not on the agenda for fifteen minutes at the beginning. And then once that time is up, it's up. And then if your meeting finishes by ten o'clock, but you're still willing to go, they'll allow another fifteen minutes at the end. So that way your business can still get done. Um, anyway, so there's, you can do it any number of ways as long as it's on the agenda and given an opportunity. Um, one suggestion I had, and I think it made it to the agenda packet, was that you might also consider moving council comments immediately after public comment. So if there is a in influx of hate speech, for example, the council will be able to immediately rebuff that in council comments immediately following public comment. Because right now you have council comments all the way at the very end. And so there's really, it's harder to
Respond.
To respond and to say, just, you know, disclaim any, uh, affiliate, so, you know, just say you don't stand for hate speech and, you know, whatever your thoughts are on those comments.
Okay, any other questions on this one? All right, so we will now go out to, to, for public comment. And then how this will work is I ask for folks that are in the chamber to either stand and, or raise your hand. So you just need to be identified. Um, and for folks that are online, if you can use the raise hand function, and I'll give everybody a second to use the raise hand function on Zoom to identify yourself as wanting to speak during public comment, and then we will close the opportunity for folks to participate. So I'll do a countdown, five, four, three, two, one. All right, so we have the folks captured online. We have t- three in the chamber. And Mr. Brassfield, take it away. It's all you.
Mike Brassfield, good evening, council, staff. Having gone through that experience, it was kind of unique for me because that's the first time my piece could be disturbed. In my previous occupation, you couldn't disturb my peace. But it, I've done these kind of cases before. My first inclination was, uh, that this was evidence. So that's why I turned to the city attorney. I said, it's only three minutes. Because when people are violating the law, you want to gather evidence. And I was glad that we had police here that night. So when I was looking at that immediately, four oh three P C, violate, it's disturbing a public meeting. The other one that struck me besides peace disturbance in general was a nuisance. When you exhibit obscene behavior, that's also a public nuisance, which is another violation of law. Even though there, there was obviously a conspiracy by, as long as you don't have a felony, you don't have a felony violation of conspiracy. Unless there's some federal sections that have yet to be identified, because I have found that these kind of disturbances by suspects, and that's what, uh, another term I use, have occurred at beyond just general governance, they've been occurred in, in committee meetings. So whatever rules you come up with are going to need to apply to those committee that are also in session as a government body. So when this whole thing started, first of all, I thought that the mayor did a great job controlling the issue, particularly since you hadn't had this discussion yet. So good job. But there's a couple of things that, that I didn't know we were restricted to three minutes tonight. I didn't hear that. Uh, but anyway, um, there's a couple of things that, that struck me. Zoom turned out to be very beneficial for governa- government because it allows people a voice when they can't make a meeting. That turns out to be so important. I'm a first, First Amendment person. I really don't like the idea of shutting off people. So please, let's consider that really hard. Um, one suggestion I do have, when you note something, either somebody physically present, making a disturbance of a meeting or online, is it the chair should immediately said, we're going to take a ten-minute recess. Because if there's no police officer present, you need to get one there. So the idea of not allowing it to continue, you, you do allow it to continue, you need to take a break. And you can, if that during that back, then the chairman can check with staff and police to assess, okay, we're going to go back on the record. And then the chairman can say, okay, because we're not going to have this kind of behavior, this obscene behavior at our public meetings, we will monitor what we're going to do very closely.
Thank you, Mr. Brassfield. I, and I, I completely hear what you're saying, and I'll, I, I'll add to that when we finish public comment, but thank you for your, thank you for your comments.
But the other.
Sorry, Mr. Brassfield, that's time. I have to be mindful of that just because everybody has to.
But we didn't say three minutes at the beginning of this meeting.
It, it's three minutes.
So it's thirty minutes. Because we didn't, we didn't limit, and so I, I've done, but, but thank you. Just thank you.
Yes.
Uh, Bob Bluth, I'm a resident of Monterey. Um, I agree with a lot of what Mike says, so I'm not going to, um, repeat his, um, comments, but I really do think public comment is an important part of the meeting process and getting people to be able to participate. The broader we can make that, the better it's going to be. Um, I just have a suggestion. I'm not sure whether, um, Christine could say whether it's, um, appropriate or not, but here I'm at the podium and I'm part of the public process. For Zoom, there's a video component and maybe one of the solutions is we look at having video as a requirement. So if you're going to participate in the meeting, we're going to make the video part uh, necessary for your public comment. And maybe that helps. We don't have to register. We don't need their name, but they're going to be like I am here with their face on screen. And maybe that limits some of the potential, um, unpleasant circumstances that could come out of them not being in the visible space where they're kind of hidden behind the, the Zoom machine by not being seen. So thank you very much.
Mayor members of the council, my name is Rick Quayre. I'm here as chairman of the NCIP. Uh, what you decide here tonight impacts every commission. Uh, NCIP in particular, what we've seen with Zoom and, and particularly, and what are we constantly strive for is as much public participation as possible. It's critical in what we do for our business because we're trying to decide how much support there is for projects for a lot of different things. So we urge you not to eliminate Zoom. We also have a number of immunocompromised board member, members, board members. And we also have handicap board members who find it much more facilitating to participate via Zoom than to come physically into the council chambers. I would imagine that's also the case with public. Uh, you have public who's immunocompromised and is not going to come in here and sit down. So you basically disenfranchise them if you do not have them. Uh, while I would like to say everyone has to be on camera, you're now disenfranchising folks who don't have a camera on their computer. Believe it or not, not everyone does, and some people call in by telephone. That is why that option is there to, to ensure that every, we maximize the ability. I think setting the idea of a max time gives you the ability to at least ensure you're not being disrupted to be able to, to do your business. Uh, right now, we've had one instance of it happening, happening as bad as it was. Let's hope that's it. And we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater by making drastic changes. My only concern with setting that overall master amount of time is to set it so that the public has the most time possible to do it, and it doesn't become a tool to limit public comment because it may not want to be hearing what is being said. Per se, it's, it's a fine balancing act on that score, but I'm sure the, the mayor and you all will, will maximize that and use it only where necessary. I urge you to keep the Zoom process. It has been very, very helpful, at least for our commission. Thank you.
All righty, and with that, we'll take it online.
Um, Esther, go ahead, please.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Um, so given that I was, that I fall into one of the categories that the hate speech was directed at, um, I absolutely understand why your inclination is to want to limit it. But to limit, uh, uh, public comment, the problem with that is, is by doing that, we're actually caving in to these disruptors that want, that want this to be the case. Um, and along with what you've heard already as far as increased participation and whatnot, I just feel like, um, public comment, if you leave it to the very end of a seven o'clock meeting, there are many meetings that go to eleven o'clock at night. And not too many of us stay on that late unless it's a topic that we're interested in. So, so I don't necessarily think that that's an option that should be seriously considered. Um, public comment as it is on agenda items are taken in and then the council deliberates and discusses, which unfortunately a lot of times there are comments that we would like to make on what you guys are just, have just said, and that we don't have the opportunity to do. So I'm not, um, in favor of that. Um, and even, I, I mean, you, limiting public comment to fifteen minutes, you're going to exclude enough too many people that want to comment, even if you cut the time down to two minutes, I, I think what's going to have to happen is you're going to have to be much more conscious and aware. And now that we know that it's happened, it won't ca- catch you off guard when somebody tries to do this again and you, you just cut it off. Um, I just don't think that the trade-off is, um, sacrificing, you know, the public comments that are really crucial to hear from all your voters. Um, believe me, I was more horrified than, than most that night. And it's still going on globally. So I think it's really important that we do not cave on this sub-subject because that is what these people want us to do. And to quiet, you know, the voices that, and the, the races and the religions that they don't agree with. So I don't envy the position that you guys are in. But I really think that you have to weigh the sacrifice, and if it makes it more difficult for staff and yourselves to monitor public comment, I don't think that that should be that, that difficult to expect from you guys to have the process continue the way that it should. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker, um, Mr. Sovereign, go ahead, please.
Good evening, this is John Sovereign. Um, I think the previous speakers have been very eloquent, um, in defense of the remote participation. And I would just, uh, want to support that. Um, if there's a need for some sort of mechanism to more quickly transition to, uh, you know, a temporary ban on, uh, remote participation, uh, if this does happen again, perhaps there's some way that when the council adjourns, because that's going to be what happens if it's a, a bad situation, the council can invoke some, uh, claim that, uh, you know, remote participation will be, uh, you know, temporarily suspended for the next sixty days. Uh, perhaps that would be more effective than, you know, asking the city manager or someone else to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is a telephone caller. Um, go ahead, please.
Good evening, this is Nina Beatty. I do not support changing the, uh, public comment policies. Um, keeping public comments for both the afternoon and the evening sessions are critical. This was a one-time anomaly. And I heard the comments repeatedly about disruptive, disruption to the meeting. And yet that's one of the criterions for, criteria for shutting someone down is if they're disrupting the meeting. So that seems very simple. Um, is to cut off the conversation if, uh, especially if it's coming by phone or by Zoom. Uh, Zoom needs to stay in place, um, and phone needs to stay in place, um, for people such as myself that would love to be there at the meeting right now, but cannot because the meeting is inaccessible to me as a, a disabled person. Um, the, uh, the discouraging of public comment, uh, will happen if you restrict public comment. Um, the policy changes would be discouraging to the public. Um, the experiment to get people to quickly line up or quickly, you know, call in. Um, sometimes an agenda item is a long one and people are coming from work and other obligations or they stepped out of the room and oops, I missed my two-second chance to get my hand up in the air. Let's go back to the way things were and cut off people that are being disrupted. Let's go back to the way things were and cut off people that are being disruptive to the meeting with their racist, sexist, um, anti-religion comments, bigoted comments. That's very simple to do. They're disrupting the meeting. And let those of us who are involved in the business of the meeting, both from the public side and from the council side, continue as, as it has in the past. But we need not to restrict public comment. That's already happening with legislation at the um, state level. And we don't need to mimic Sacramento's terrible choices and, and putting bills forth to limit the state agency, transparency and local government transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have another, one more um, telephone caller. And go ahead, please.
Yes, good evening. Um, it's unlawful to curtail public comments with uh, excessive time limits. And if you read the Bagley Act, which I have read, uh, it states that the council cannot do that. And if they do, um, they have to limit their own conversations. So it's really important the council members start looking at the Bagley Act. And um, uh, I hardly agree with everyone so far with everything they've said. Uh, I think this, I don't think that government really wants public comment because I have noticed for the most part, you really don't act on it. Um, and unless it's something agreeable with you. And I think this is a perfect opportunity to, to further limit and curtail. I think people just have to, if they don't wanna listen to what these people are saying, they can just turn their head away and not listen and not take it seriously. But to actually take away our ability to participate in government is a crime. And you probably will see a lawsuit sooner or later under the Bagley Act. And particularly for the handicapped and um, you know, there's always gonna be a threat. There's always gonna be people that are gonna call in and be obscene. You could do some bleeping where a certain obscene words would just be bleeped out like they do on television. You could do that. And um, I think those are options that are very, very important to look into. But um, you must, um, and you must act on the Bagley Act and uh, allocate time enough. We already have only three minutes. It used to be five minutes. Um, and so now it's two minutes and now it's even one minute. And that's illegal to, to go to that extent unless the council members are also willing to do that. So, thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, there are no further comments on Zoom.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for all those that provided public comment, bringing it back to the council for discussion, deliberation. Uh, should we start in order?
Oh, yeah, let's take one at a time. Let's discuss one at a time and then we'll jump to the next one. We're ready. So I saw council member Hoffa's hand go up. We'll start with number seven, I believe, if I'm correct.
So is that the particip- Zoom participation question?
Sorry, that's the reconsideration policy. So if we wanted to reconsider, if the council wanted to reconsider.
Um, well, I would just say with respect to that, I don't think it's been a problem. I don't think there even have been that many. Uh, I think in all my time on council is almost twelve years. I think I've only asked to reconsider once, and I just don't remember it coming up that often. So, I don't think we really need to change what we're doing. That's my view.
How, how about I ask this? Does anybody feel there's a need to change anything in regards to the reconsideration policy?
Well, well, I just thought of something because of what Alan said. Uh, it's the way collaboration goes. You say something, you think of something else. But this recommendation is the way we currently do it. Is that correct, staff? Yeah, that's what I thought. And to answer your question, I don't see a reason to change anything as it's recommended in seven because it's the way we do it now. And I feel comfortable that, uh, that works.
Perfect. Okay. Anybody else? Any desire to change? Okay, so we will leave number seven alone. Go to number eight, council member, interactions with labor unions when negotiations are pending. If I were to do a recap, I think what I heard were a couple of options. Are they up on the scene? Continue existing policy. I know, can you go to the next slide, please? Um, so we can meet with them. We could set up a process where we, we disclose it. So, yeah, sorry, go, go ahead, Ed.
Well, this is helpful. From the practices of what's occurred, the time I've been on the council, this is fundamentally what happens in closed session. If there's been a meeting, you know, if you, if you vet with a association, then the council member just exposes that. Is staff feeling that we need to have that written that it says we shall disclose that? Is, is that what the recommendation is? Is that we, we would say something about the direction to the council members? And this, you know, we're talking about governance. This would apply to planning commissioners as well. Wouldn't it? Or A R C?
Well, I think this is specifically to do with, with uh, negotiations with the labor groups.
Okay, so if it's, if it's limited to negotiations. Yeah, I mean, pretty much it stays the same way it's, it's been. I mean, I don't see any reason to change it. Cause that's, I think that's.
I mean, I, I agree. I, I think, um, you know, if we make it a kind of requirement, then what's gonna be the penalty? Who's gonna enforce it? I think it really is the ethical responsibility of council members to disclose to their colleagues. That is our practice. I, I think not allowing that communicate, any kind of communication would limit the ability of that, those stakeholder groups to be able to communicate with us. And that's important, especially since, I mean, there are times when they're in negotiations for a long time. And so, and there may be other issues they're concerned about beyond negotiations that they wouldn't be able to communicate with us. And we can't talk to non-leadership because that could be perceived as side bargaining or interference. So, I think kind of leaving it the way it is, uh, with the understanding that we would disclose uh, our communication with our colleagues. So, which is what we do essentially.
Councilor Brubber?
So I, I concur with what you're saying because it, it just, this is what we're doing already. We, we've already done this. Um, and uh, different other situations. So, um, I don't know whether the polit- this is to make it a policy, correct? Yes. Yes, okay. So to make it a policy, this makes it, um, I guess concrete. But I don't, i- if we make it a policy and we don't put, uh, if it's not done, this is what happens. I mean, I mean, my question is, is that, um, can you just do it that way where you're just having it to be just, this is what it is? What, what we're doing already without having the, um, what, this is what the repercussion is?
Well, I think all concerns are, are, are the following. When, when we on the middle of labor negotiations, you, the council authorize the labor negotiations. You're telling us what, what you want to do in closed session. And in those closed sessions, you give us usually unanimous direction. This is what we are implementing. Uh, our concern is that when council members meet during that phase, while you have labor negotiations going on, uh, if, if you meet with union represent, representation on, on the topic of labor negotiations, um, that uh, whatever comes out of that uh, may or may not follow the direction that the majority of the council gave the labor negotiations. Even if you don't say anything, uh, it, it, it always lends itself to, to interpretation by, by, by the folks you deal with. So our concern was, uh, and, and, and we, we shared this with council previously, was that while we are in the face of labor negotiations and you have given us five zero guidance and how you like us to negotiate, um, we, we don't want to have the real danger or consideration by, by, by labor groups that you might actually think differently and indicate differently. And, and again, you, you are an elected official and, and I understand your, your, um, your, your desire also to, to engage. For us, it's, 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 um, it's worth discussing with you. How do you wanna deal while we are in labor negotiations? And this can be very contentious. They can be very difficult. And uh, again, is this something that, that you wanna basically abstain from while we are in labor negotiations? Or do you wanna go into uh, those meetings? Again, it's, it's your prerogative and then disclose, I went into those meetings. Um, while of course you understand that those meetings are called to go there to sway you into one or the other direction. Those meetings are not called just to tell you how's the weather. The, 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 the unions wanna meet with you because they wanna use the opportunity to influence the negotiations that you authorized in closed session. So that's a question in, in front of you. Do you wanna go there? Do you not wanna go there? And, and as, as, as staffer, I think you should not go there because you speak through your negotiators.
Okay, well, thank you for that uh, clarification. Um, so I, I feel, I, I feel like I understand during negotiations, um, not being able to have that conversation so it doesn't uh, make the negotiations more complex. I, I understand what you're talking about there. Um, but again, I think you said, and I think uh, uh, Councilman Hoffa said it as well is that as elected officials in, in having transparency with government with that, that value driver, I think it's important that we're able to be accessible. It doesn't mean to go into a meeting with any, you know, like, I think it said that they're not saying anything, uh, but making sure that we disclose, um, I had a meeting with so-and-so. I didn't say anything. I just listened. And of course, we know that they're having us there to sway, but it's, it's no different than when we have something on the agenda and we're going through it and people feel one way or the other. And we come in here and we, you know, have conversations or say, I had a meeting with so-and-so about whatever it was, um, and then move from there. But I think it's important as elected officials that we remain transparent and have access, that the public have access.
Councilor Garcia. Thank you. Um, to those points, actually, it, it kinda makes me think that, uh, actually number eight and number nine are kind of redundant, right? Because if we, if, if we think that, you know, we need to keep that open communication, um, knowing that there may be negotiations taking place. Um, and we understand as the council, right, individuals that, you know, it's, it's, it's a sensitive conversation that we're going into. Um, for number nine, I'm reading here, quote, existing policy reads, council members should avoid taking positions on issues that may come before them in their quasi judicial capacity. So I think that, right, covers what the concern would be for number eight. So my, um, I, 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 I agree, um, pretty much with everything that's been said. I mean, the only concern I have with creating the distinction between the two is for, for number eight, for, with discussions that we have with labor groups. I think it, it makes sense for us to disclose a discussion that might be had if it has something to do with the labor negotiations, right? So if it has to do with the contract, then that makes sense to disclose. But if we're meeting with something, with them on something unrelated, um, I, I just kinda wanna make sure that we draw the distinction and stay focused on, on, but the, but the, I think intent of the disclosure, disclosure is. So that's just kinda my, my only thought.
What I'm struggling here is that there's, there's no language that's in front of us that says, this is what we recommend that you say. I mean, I think staff wants us to have a conversation about this, which is what we're doing, which is great. But I think I would be comfortable with a, a statement in here that said, uh, elected council members should avoid when in negotiations, having conversations that could potentially affect those negotiations. And the requirement that there be reporting to the closed session, other council members. And it would also say that we also have a responsibility to talk to our city manager even before we go and meet. So I don't know how the language would turn out, but I, I would be comfortable with there being a statement of, of saying that council members should avoid uh, putting themselves in meetings while in negotiations. But I also struggle with the fact that as an elected, I wanna say that I'm always accessible and anybody can call me at any time. But I'm disciplined enough to know what I'm not gonna say and what I'm not gonna commit to unless we're in closed session doing that as a body. So, I think the language needs to be clear. It's, it's encouraging all electeds to avoid it, but if they do, they should report it. So that's just my opinion about it. I don't know how else to say it other than city council members need to use common sense and reasonableness and they should avoid uh, making any commitments uh, to any labor group that they're, that we are currently in negotiations. But I don't wanna say we should not be accessible. I think that's too restrictive.
And, and part of my thought goes back to what Alan was saying around the last topic is like, we create language around it. And then what does that do as far as consequences? Like, how do we manage that? So I think that, I, I, I don't know. I don't know how to handle it. I'm, I'm open to, to language, but I just wanna make sure that we're not putting in undue extra work on ourselves and complicating things more than it need to be. Any, whoever wants to go, Councilor Hoffa?
Yeah, I understand your concern, Councilmember Ed. I mean, I think I would be okay. Essentially, we need to abide by the law, which means you're not engaging in side bargaining. And um, that's the most important thing. I don't, I'm not comfortable with saying that we shouldn't meet during, uh, we shouldn't meet at all during, um, when bargaining is happening because sometimes bargaining can go on for years. I mean, so that's a long time to sort of not be, not for, for those folks not to have access to us. Yeah. But I do think it is important to maybe clarify that when council members meet with bargaining units, they need to be extremely cautious about not engaging in bargaining. You know, not in ba- not, not, um, not engaging in, in bargaining. That's, that's the key thing.
So to, to borrow a, a line from um, Gino Garcia, you sort of made the parallel between eight and nine. If you look at nine, council members should avoid taking positions on issues that may come before them in there and then substitute when in negotiations with labor groups. It's, it's, they should avoid, but that's not a, you shall not and you must not. So I, I think there needs to be some language that paints the picture that when in negotiations, we should avoid it. Um, and if it does occur, we should report it.
So I'm, I'm open to that. I, I'll go ahead and make a motion to add policy language that states council members should avoid taking positions on labor contracts during negotiation, while negotiations are pending.
In, in private meetings.
Taking positions, um, yeah, in, in private meetings with labor groups. Yeah, council member should avoid taking positions um, on labor contracts uh, when negotiations are pending in private conversations until they have heard all the evidence and arguments at the, so just kinda continued out the rest of the language from the number nine until they have heard all the evidence and arguments at the public hearing on the issue. I guess.
In this case, it might be a closed session.
Until they have heard all the.
So, so the number nine, uh, even though eight to nine is, is in relationship is, is for public hearings, like appeal hearings, et cetera. Uh, you will hear all facts or you will hear everything in closed session. Uh, you make decisions about labor in closed sessions, so there's no public.
Let me try to rework it, reword it. Council members should avoid private conversations on, on labor contracts. private conversations on, on labor contracts when negotiations are pending. I think just leaving like that.
I can second that.
Any other discussion?
And then do you wanna include the second half of that? The, uh, requirement to report.
Oh, yes, I apologize, yes. Um, so let me, let me, let me add to that. Um. The expectation is for council to disclose disclose any discussion surrounding the negotiations.
Okay, I'm okay with that. As a seconder.
Okay.
So the, the, well, could we have, uh, a minute time read the, the motion back?
Yes. Council members should avoid private conversations on labor contracts when negotiations are pending and should disclose to the council any discussions surrounding the negotiations.
Uh, does it's pretty sim- it's pretty close.
So you're saying avoid meeting with them during negotiations? Then I, I wouldn't be okay with that.
Okay.
Council members should avoid private conversations on labor contracts when negotiations are pending. And should disclose to the council any discussions surrounding the negotiation.
So this, this isn't, this isn't saying, this is, what I hear it's saying is not that we can't have conversations, it's just to avoid engaging in the, in the conversation around the contract.
On the contract. Not, not during, on the contract.
On the contract.
What I understood the motion was.
It's correct.
Council members should avoid private conversations on labor contracts when negotiations are pending. And should disclose to the council any discussions surrounding the negotiations.
And, and disclose.
To the council any discussions surrounding the negotiations.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All who's in favor? I, any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, let's go on to number nine, ex parte contacts and quasi judicial proceedings. Let me just start from the space. Does anybody feel like we need to change the existing policy? I'm just gonna read it just so that everybody's on the same page. The policy currently reads, council members should avoid taking positions on issues that may come before them in their quasi judicial capacity. Until they have heard all the evidence and arguments at the public hearing on the issue. It is the practice, oh, that's it, it is back to the city council to disclose ex parte contacts and quasi judicial hearings at the start of the public hearing.
Okay, so I'll say again, I kind of, I'm of two minds of this. Again, on the one hand, I think it is important that council members be accessible. And, uh, that's an important part of our role. I will say there have been times when I felt like, um, maybe there was information other council members had that I didn't have, that had been, had been learned in this way. So I mean, I do feel like it can be problematic. Um, but again, I, I'm, I'm just kinda going, I'm just speaking here. I mean, I, it's problematic trying to police that. Could we do a better job? Probably. How do you get there? I don't know.
But I think the key word here is avoid taking positions. I mean, you know, if, if you're having a meeting with someone, we should be mature and smart enough to say, look, I haven't heard all the evidence, I, I take no position, but I wanna hear your, um, your talking points on it. We'll decide this in open chambers with the entire city council. And give them five minutes, give them, you know, whatever it takes. We take no position. I think that's the, the tenor of the.
I would just clarify, or not. I mean, it's up to us to decide whether or not we would accept the ex parte communication. But if we were to take it, I, I, your point is ta- well taken.
But, but I think we still have the requirement of reporting it, disclosing it.
That's correct.
Yes, absolutely.
That's why I think we're legally bound to that requirement.
Um, so is, is this, this is the way we operate now?
That's correct. I think what I heard when Christie was presenting this earlier, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there's examples that are given in attachment three. Um, that could add to the policy. Um, Chrissy, I, maybe I pass it to you for a second to see if, is there anything specific that you feel like would be of added value that we might wanna throw in here?
Not from a legal recommendation and I, I think, um, the council's been very good about disclosing ex party contacts at the outset of a hearing. It just was, um, to show you that there's different ways of addressing this. And some cities have pretty rigid restrictions, like you will not talk to people. And if you will, if you do, you're gonna record what was said in writing and it's gonna be put in the packet, you know? So there's a lot of different ways to address this and, and, um, legally, the way you're doing it is fine. We just wanted to give you the option to consider all different variations.
So I feel like, you know, I would just say, let's continue to do what we're doing. I, we definitely don't wanna go down that road. And we don't wanna make it difficult for the public to access council either, so.
I, I, I agree. And I, and I think further that, um, attachment at three is good material. It's good reading. And every council member should read that the second they've been confirmed that they won, they should be studying on day two before they get sworn in. I think it's, it's outstanding information, uh, from a, a level of getting yourself ready to work as a council member. Um, so I think we're doing it well now. I don't see a reason to change.
Anybody else? Okay, let's move on to number 10, meeting management.
We have to vote on that?
I don't think, I don't think there was anything, cause it's, it's the current policy, um, me.
Come back with them, a final resolution anyway, uh, on consent agenda, right? So you'll have one more stab at tweaking language if you need to.
Perfect.
Yeah, when you all agree like this, I just say it was on consensus and then.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, awesome, awesome. Um, all right, number 10, meeting management, public comments on Zoom. Who wants to start this convo? Councilmember Barber?
So, a, a lot of great comments from everyone, um, from, uh, talking about the, the, making sure that the public is not disenfranchised. I think that's very important. And, and it was, it's become very, um, evident that the Zoom option is, uh, allowing a lot of people who normally would not be able to make it. Uh, this app, I think, um, Assistant, uh, City Manager was talking about before, whether they have kids or whether they have to work late or what have you. And I think all of that is important. Um, but I, I, I do think that it's important that we have to see, um, how we can be able to protect everyone. Uh, you can disenfranchise those, um, and we don't wanna disenfranchise anyone, but we also don't want it to become, uh, something where it's just, um, open and, and allowed. We wanna make sure that it's, um, structured to it, to be able to be handled correctly. So that we're protecting all. So that's a part of quality of life, which is one of our drivers as well. Cause everybody would have that quality of life of not having to live in fear or to be, um, you've heard some of the emotions that were happened tonight that, that are impacted so much that, um, it's mentally, um, impacting. So I think we have to be cognitive of all of those pieces of making sure that we don't disenfranchise. But also making sure that we are having structure. Um, and I, I like part of the structure that, um, they were talking about, uh, uh, the first, uh, person was talking about before. Of having a structure where you automatically go to a break. But that also you have the, the, uh, the option of, I like how we have a certain amount of time. I know it's short time, but at least you have that access. You're still not disenfranchising someone. By having a shorter period, how we're experimenting right now to get your hands up, either if you're in, in the, uh, chamber or if you're online. You're still getting that access, you're not disenfranchising, but you're also limiting, uh, people to have time to go, uh, structure of different, uh, type of strategy like it was. And even though it was one time, doesn't mean that's the only time that's gonna happen. Um, it's already shown even in some of the other, uh, nonprofit data that it's been in a twenty percent increase in hate speeches, uh, across the, the nation. So this doesn't mean that this could be the only time. So I don't get caught up in saying, oh, it only happened one time. Well, only hap- only takes one time for it to, to everything to blow up. So that's very important for us to make sure that we have structures in place so that we can protect everyone, so that everyone can have quality of life, including those that continue to have access. But also to have a structure to stop that, because I believe one person was saying, oh, it's okay, they can just keep it going and then they just have to turn their heads. Well, that's easy to say if you're not impacted in that. And we heard from one of the groups that were impacted tonight, uh, online. And so it's not just as easy as just turn your head and don't listen, because it's still there. So I think it's important for us to recognize and be able to have a structure that is beneficial for, for everybody.
Council Garcia. Thank you. Um, I pretty much agree with, um, what Dr. Barber just shared. Um, but to add a couple of points here, the pandemic definitely brought a lot of nastiness to our, our world. Um, there were a, a few lessons that we were able to learn um, in trying to connect better and keep everyone, um, in communication and virtual platforms definitely ca- um, played a key role in keeping us connected and they still continue to do that. So I think it's really important that we maintain the, uh, the, the platform. Um, the virtual platform, either Zoom or, or a system that it better capable at, um, providing us, um, the communication we need with our residents. Um, but also allowing us the, uh, control to monitor and to prevent, um, calls like the ones we experienced during that council meeting. So, um, I, I I hear what, uh, our residents are saying. Um, and, and we definitely need to, uh, maintain some kind of, of, of platform that's, that allows folks to, to be connected to these meetings that, that's not in person. Um, but being a little bit familiar with, uh, specifically talking about Zoom as a platform. Um, I, I can see how it, it's problematic to maintain the current system that we have. Because, um, it's basically one calling, one caller coming in after the next. And there's really no way to identify who's on the line and then no, no real way to identify what they're about to say. So, um, I, I think that the alternative that we've currently experienced since which is really identifying those specific windows of time when folks can raise their hands. Um, not the best system, but seems to be working well enough. At least for the time being, um, while perhaps we entertain, uh, other options. Um, and, and I would imagine that, um, Zoom as a company has had an influx of maybe calls or um, requests from clients requesting some more support along these lines, right? I mean, kinda feels like it's possibly a programming thing that, or maybe a new offering from Zoom. Um, that, you know, potentially, uh, could come about because of these kinds of things. So anyways, um, I'm, I'm in favor of, of maintaining any possible tool to, um, keep our residents in communication, uh, with these meetings. Um, and I think that's all I have to, excellent. Councilmember Smith?
The fact that we even have to do this, um, because we were Zoom bombed like many other cities and counties uh, annoys me, you know, uh, it, it still bugs me. Uh, as I mentioned, I went to the Lee California Cities as, as, uh, the mayor did. And this was the talk of, of the conference with how city councils are, are dealing with this. Um, if we shut off Zoom and we retreat and we go to pre-COVID, it sounds like we're protecting us and the public. But to me, that means these hateful, despicable, uh, anti-Semitic, uh, hate mongers win. And I don't wanna let that happen. Unfortunately, we have to balance the First Amendment. And we've got a, a great city attorney that's given us some criteria where we understand it. It's one of those things that comes with the, with the job of being in the public. And as you know, and Mike, um, Rassfield tonight shared, um, some of his experiences in terms of his career was that his peace couldn't be disturbed. And that's what was my circumstances as well. Um, but you, you learn to have to tolerate some of that. But we do have a mechanism where we're not gonna tolerate it for any longer than we have to. And I think, um, with the mayor and all of us having experienced this, the fact that we're we have a heightened sense now of how to procedurally and technology wise shut it off when it crosses the line, when it's no longer the First Amendment rights. And now they've stepped out of that and now it's, um, out of policy and we shut it off. Um, and that's uncomfortable to have to do. It's difficult to have to do. But what I'm hearing from a lot of electeds throughout the state is that they are recognizing that they have to stay on it. But they have to endure some of those things, um, that is uncomfortable that we did. Um, but we cannot violate the US Constitution and get anywhere close to the First Amendment violations. And at the same time, I think we owe it to our community where they have access to us in as many ways as they can. So for, for, what do we do? You know how I stand. Uh, I say we keep on. We keep it with the public has access, cause I never wanna, uh, deny the access for those that are medically unable to come. They are able to participate and, and give us their opinion. And it's very important that we hear from everyone in the community. Or if someone has a, a topic of an item that is, um, it's of interest to them and important and they may be traveling, they're able to access us. So I think we need to maintain that access to our, to our public. Um, in terms of managing the, whether it's two minutes or three mon- minutes, or if it's one minute, depending on if we have a crowd. I think that's for the mayor to entirely manage. Uh, I think that's the mayor's prerogative to, to determine what the length of time is for uh, public access to us. And sometimes we're gonna hear things we don't like and, and, you know, maybe it doesn't have profanity attached to it. But we have to hear it sometimes with the bark on. And that's what we get elected to do. And if you don't wanna hear it and you wanna have everything perfect and your perspective is, um, you get intimidated by it, then, um, you have to kinda get used to it when you get elected and you get sworn in, because we're gonna hear from all kinds of perspectives. And that's what makes a healthy city and a government when we get to hear from the dissenting. But we ask that it be professional and not vulgar and not hate speech. And have access to us and tell us what's on your heart, but keep it within the constraints of respect. And we can get along just fine. So I'm in favor of continuing with the Zoom, the phone call in. Um, up to three minutes if the mayor believes that we have the time and we don't have too many people. From time to time, we'll probably go down to two minutes. Or if we have seventy-five people in here, maybe it's one minute till we get through it and we continue the meeting and come back and do it again. Um, nobody ever said government is, is all clean. Uh, democracy is messy, difficult, but it's worth it.
Thanks, Ed. Senator Hoffa.
Yeah, um, so it sounds like, I think, um, by and large, we all share a similar desire, which is to ensure uh, robust public access to the meeting and participation. Um, I, I would also like to maintain remote participation. The only question I have is how we best do that to kind of balance it and to address Councilwoman Barber's concerns too, to make sure that people are not, um, maybe prohibited from participating because they can't stand to hear that kind of speech. And so then you're kind of limiting them. So we wanna do the best we can to make sure we, um, uh, find the right balance. So one way is to kinda continue with what we've been doing. So far it's worked, although I can imagine a scenario where um, those disruptors call in for every single item and every item takes a half an hour. And that could really make it hard to get through a meeting. Um, I think I heard one suggestion offered by staff that I'm interested in talking more about and an idea suggested by a member of the public. I'd like to talk more about. So the one, Mr. Blue suggested, well, could Mr. Blue suggested, well, could people be required to use a camera? And I guess that's a first a question for you, Chrissy. Can that be a requirement? Obviously, people who are here. Speaking in person, yes, I suppose they could wear a mask, uh but they are here in person. We do see and we do see. We do see them.
I I think it might actually be answered with a technical. Because aren't only panelists able to turn their cameras on and then.
We can, we can certainly allow video. The the biggest downside is that it opens up to more Zoom bombing. Some agencies, the Unified School Districts have seen pornography and other graphic material shown on. On the screen when either camera or screen sharing is allowed.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, that won't work.
And books they have in the back and. And you know, uh I was in a meeting where we got bombed about two and a half years ago. Uh teaching a class and it was, uh we found out who it was, but. You know, when you have the visual added to the audio, it almost makes it worse.
Yep, no, you're right.
Now you're now you're not only you hearing it. And it goes by fast and you get, you know, what do you hear thirty percent of what's said? But if you visually see it, now it almost means that we're. We're making more victims.
Yeah.
And I don't think I want to do that.
So that's not going to work. The other thing that I heard staff say, and I just want to maybe better understand it. I think the suggestion was that the city manager. Be empowered to sort of suspend remote. Participation. In an emergency kind of declaration for up to sixty days. I'm wondering, you know, and I I understand why because we have meetings where the mayor's not there, but we could also. Say the chair of the meeting. So I think that would be better to kind of take it out of. The city manager's responsibility and keep it in. The body that is sort of responsible for managing the public engagement. But maybe a- and I just want to be clear. So let's say, let's say we empowered the mayor and chairs of committees to be able to do that. The meetings bombed. They say, okay, I'm declaring an emergency. Let's say for the next thirty days up to sixty days seems like a lot to me. Let's say thirty days, that would be potentially up to two meetings. Could we come back at the next meeting and? Again, the mayor or the chair of whatever the committee might be says, okay, now I am choosing to lift that. That emergency declaration. Or if it's thirty days, sixty days, whatever, does that mean absolutely forbidden to have remote participation until that clock? Has sort of run out. Do you understand what I'm asking? Okay.
One, one technical impediment might be. For public hearings that have already been noticed for different boards and commissions. And so. Let's say there's already been something published in the paper for a hearing. Following a city council disruption where then there's a declaration of we're not having Zoom, that would be a problem. We'd still have to have Zoom for the ones that were noticed that way.
What if we noted, what if our, all of our notifications included this potential emergency? First process.
I I think I'd have to think about it.
Okay.
I would just ask. That scenario would be the case regardless though, right? Like if we. Whether it's the city manager or. Mayor, the chair, whoever it is decides that we need to have trigger some kind of action. Anything that's been noticed at that point is going to have to go forward assumidly. With the process that it was. And how it was communicated.
And I can, I can add also, I know we in in Chrissy can. Chime in as well in the first week in October, when we weren't sure whether we were going to move forward with online public comment or not. Temporarily, we agendized notices so that it was clear, please refer to the agenda for public participation options. That then allowed for flexibility for either joining online if we have that option or in person only. That generic, I don't know if that generic language would be sustainable long term or.
Okay, that could be something we need to forget, but.
Yeah, I want to follow up a little bit on, uh yeah, I agree that 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 I like having the option to do that quickly. If we were to have multiple. Boards and commissions and council all of a sudden get bombarded and we realize that we need some time to collect and and stop. I really kind of think for my perspective is that that authority should lie with the council. Not the city manager or not the singular. Seat of the mayor. Because really it's if it's going to go across boards and commissions. And it's that kind of an issue, I think collectively the city council, we could quickly have an emergency meeting and have a quorum. And we we could then say, yes, let's enact a thirty day. Uh emergency hold. I just, I just, I hesitate in giving that to the chairs because then we get into the case of. All of the different chairs are trying to interpret the criteria that's the justification and then we have inconsistency. I would rather it collectively be with the body that enacts. The bigger lift and policy citywide.
Chris.
Yeah, this isn't a legal comment at all, but I just wanted to make you aware that. In the towns, my understanding anyway, where Zoom platform has been suspended, um the hate speakers have.
Chilled up.
Gone on a bus and show up in person. So don't, don't be lured into thinking that. Eliminating a platform is going to eliminate hate speech. It's unfortunate that it's in our society, but. Just be prepared that 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 could be a fallout.
Okay, so if I can maybe jump in with some of my thoughts and comments. I think it was Mr. Brassfield had indicated something about a a public nuisance and and it triggered a thought in my mind. I think it's maybe a slippery slope because it. How do you interpret what a public nuisance is? But I just kind of wanted to get your sense of that comment. From a legal perspective.
Sure, the the challenging part here is uh it's very difficult to disrupt, actually disrupt a council meeting virtually. So for example, excessive applause coming from the audience is much more. Easy to establish as dis- actual disruption than hate speech online. So. The important thing to remember is conduct versus content. So the content of speech in and of itself is does not amount to an actual disruption. I know that. A lot of people in the public might think otherwise, but that's what the case law holds. Whereas jeering, booing, threatening, being really aggressive in the meeting, things like that are an actual disruption. And you can shut down the meeting and um clear everybody out except for the press. Have policies in place on how you're going to let people back in. So there's things that you can do. And I would assume you could do that on Zoom as well, clear out the Zoom. But again, it's harder to prove. Actual disruption just because you disagree with what's being stated.
Just a clarifying question. I'm sorry to Chrissy. So I'm I'm kind of confused on that because. When you talk about disruption and you're trying to be able to define it in the different circumstances. The fact that we couldn't continue on to any item, isn't that a disruption?
I think what we've done to address that is set a time limit so that. It's impossible to disrupt it beyond a certain amount of time. So we had no ending time on there and we also had no ability to control. New people adding on and on and on. And a lot of the times it was the same person on Zoom. Um under a different login. And so what we've established through this temporary policy that you're operating under today. Is that we're going to capture who has got their hand raised on Zoom. And the mayor is going to take that number into consideration to come up with an amount of time that each speaker should speak. Up to a maximum of thirty minutes. And so when you have that end time. Whether it's fifteen, twenty, thirty or an hour, you at least have some assurance that. You don't have to tolerate. Comments that you don't like beyond that time limit. And so again. Comments can be hurtful, painful, despicable, all kinds of things, but that doesn't amount to a disruption just because you don't like the speech. And so when we have no time limits, we can't target people just based on what they're saying.
And what I would add, what I would add too is that there was another little piece that we added in there, which is. Be clarified, which is if they're off topic.
Exactly. So what I'm saying, it's it's a couple of things that that to me, it's it's a thin line where you're talking about disruption because if you're. If you have a meeting and agenda and you can't get to that me- that that agenda, then you're disrupting the meeting. I mean, it's it's no different than somebody standing up and shouting and cut and stop and stopping us from going to the next agenda item. It's no different.
That's that's absolutely true. And that's why the council is allowed to establish reasonable time, place and manner restrictions. On speech, but you cannot regulate the content.
Right, I'm not talking about that.
Right.
I'm talking about the disruption, talking about defining the disruption. That that's my key.
Right.
Is that there you can define disruption even online.
Right, an actual disruption is defined in case law and and.
Yeah.
What I can say is that it's extremely difficult to prove. An actual disruption when someone is virtual. They're not going to come in here and attack you. They're not going to, your speech isn't amounting to a crime. So proving an actual disruption when it's occurring online. I haven't seen that proven yet.
So that wouldn't have been considered a disruption last time when we couldn't get to the agenda. That's not a disruption because you can't get to the next item. I'm just, I'm curious.
I I don't believe it was and um police investigated and it wasn't a crime. So we can cut people off.
I'm not talking about the crime part. I'm talking about the disruption.
It was not a disruption. The the deficiency in our rules is that we didn't have an ending time. For public comment, so it could have gone on all night. Because the people on Zoom. Kept repeatedly raising their hands. And so in that regard. It it was maybe a disruption, but we had no ending on public comment. And then if we were to do something, it would just be based on the content of speech. And that's a very dangerous position for government to. Get into. Um we can't censor. Right, well, but it is about content because if if the people had kept commenting and it was things that people liked.
Right.
You wouldn't say it was a disruption.
Right, but in this case, it was the content and it was a disruption. The co- the the, to me, the content in how they utilize the strategy. With the content to to. To disrupt because the intent was to disrupt it.
What which part of the strategy are you referring to?
The constant like uh like after saying what they said. I mean, so that's trying to, you know, to disrupt the meeting.
Right, so but so we were able to, if we didn't recognize the voice, we were able to say, hey, you've already spoke.
Right.
So we we have mechanisms to address.
Yeah.
Right, the constant and we're going to say you have to raise your hand up all at one time, right? So we've, we're addressing that piece.
But I'm just making sure I'm clear on. On wha- what we're doing now is now I'm saying what happened then, would that been, would that have been considered that that? That's what I'm trying to get an understanding.
I think what we're doing now can work, given the fact that the mayor reminded us, he does have, you know. We got caught off guard, but we now know if the per- he can redirect them to be on topic and if they're not, that's it. They're cut off. So and the fact that they have to identify, people have to identify at the beginning of each item. Will also. Limit the ability of people to sort of be be able to re-log in. So they get one bite at it. If they're off topic, they're done. I think this can work and I think we should maybe keep going with what we're doing.
Let me just finish, let me just finish some last minute dots. Okay, um one other question I have is. What are, what's happening with the boards, commissions and committees now without us? Are are they following the same process and procedures as the council is?
They're following the same process and and all the tools that that we've employed.
Okay.
And none of those commissions have experienced impaling.
Alright, perfect. And then. In regards to the max time, I just want to iterate to the public. Because I know that that can feel restrictive in regards to us limiting public comment. And it's not just our ability to say, well, maybe we'll restrict it to two minutes till a lot more people to speak. But we could also, depending on the issue, um if it's a really important issue to the public, extend that time as Chrissy had indicated, right? So we could say, let's bump that up to forty minutes or an hour so that we can give more time. Of course, that does leave a door open to having to endure more hate speech, but that's. At least having that standard there gives us that flexibility to play with. So I just kind of wanted to to iterate that. And and I and I agree with Councilmember Barber's statement in in regards to the public comments about essentially. Turning your head, uh turning it off so that you don't have to hit, listen to the hate speech. That's just. Like it's, it's not realistic. And it's not fair to those that are wanting to engage and participate. It's, this is a really tough conversation. I mean, this is why we're spending so much time on it. Because we're trying to balance the need to elicit as much public input. Um and not only from the folks that have and continue to participate, but from folks that may be new. And ma- imagine if that was somebody's first council meeting and they're like, wow, I don't ever want to go to a council meeting again. I mean, we've just, I mean. We have to really. Dance this really carefully here. Um so I think that we have a set of policies. Um in how it currently functions, how we've been functioning since that September nineteenth council meeting that is working. And then the the last piece of what was in the staff report was. Whether to, and I didn't hear any of my colleagues say this, I'm assuming that we're probably on the same page. To leave public comment both in the afternoon and the evening. I think leaving that as an option, if somebody's not available in the evening, I think it's good to just. Have that option available to them. I think we might be able to play with that in the future if we want to move it around. But for the sake of time tonight, I think let's just leave it all the same. So if we're good with it by consensus, let's maybe just keep the policy as we've been going. Unless there's any disagreement in regards to that.
Yeah.
Councilmember.
So. I'm fine with going forward with that. And I know you, we've been doing that as an experiment to see how it 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 processes and that's, that's fine. But I'm curious, I know uh Councilman Garcia was talking about um the actual platform. Um and and maybe a a different type of platform. And I don't know because I'm not the IT experts. I'm gonna put that out there already. But I know with a lot of meetings that I have, especially because um dealing with the government on a lot of things, they use uh Microsoft meetings. Um and they claim it to be more secure or whatever. I don't know because I'm not the IT expert. Is that something that staff can look into and compare? Because and it's free. It's not like um if the public wanted to be a part of it, they don't have to pay money for it.
I I guess I just see part of the problem being is that if we switch to Microsoft Teams. I imagine that the issue could still be the same because we're.
Yeah, that is, that will maintain, continue to be an issue unfortunately with with Teams. Teams has fewer options in terms of being able to. Require uh folks to join in on audio only. Uh and um and the Zoom bombing can can continue to occur. Uh Zoom is is really the the standard and we use. Uh an even elevated and more secure platform called Zoom Gov, which is only for government agencies. It's authorized by Homeland Security as as uh. This being the most secure with servers here in the United States.
Thank you for that clarification.
Um and I did want to bring up one last thing that was discussed, which is. How we handle. If we do have an incident, how we handle it. And and part of my thought is. Let's say it happens and for whatever reason we have to. Um adjourn a meeting early. To me, that action of the adjournment should automatically trigger. Let's go, let's, let's hold off on doing the Zoom. For thirty days. And then at the very next council meeting, it's automatically agendized. So we have an opportunity to discuss it as a council and then we can figure out how to move forward from there. So that way it's not really anybody's. Choice other than probably the the mayor, just to the extent of having to adjourn the meeting. And then that adjournment, does that seem like that could work? From a staff perspective.
Yes, I think that works, uh but you will not fundamentally change the constitution of the United States of America. So so I think you still have the issue of, as we described about free speech and identifying it when it comes to the point. So I I I just want to say that there's, there's no magic bullet out there. We we can stop it for thirty days. And then you have to say, do we want Zoom meetings or not Zoom meetings? That's the only other option. And you already gave us clearly your preference. Which I might add rightfully so, keep the Zoom option open. I think that makes the greatest sense for for public participation. But as as our attorney pointed out, um. The law is, and the rulings are what they are. And whether we change the platform, they will just change with the platform. And and so we we cannot. We have to walk through that right now is is my 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 best uh assessment right now. Those guys. Are haters, are idiots, but we have to walk through that and have to. Have to do what we can do and what 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 the council has done and the boards and commissions are doing is uh. Making it uh as 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 transparent as possible to stop them when they are starting that. And that's what we have to do.
I mean, part of it is I see it. I I I see it challenging. I mean, unless we've extended public comment so long and they have a huge group of people calling in. That's the only circumstance where I see it being where we have to result in an adjournment. But I think we have enough. Mechanisms in place that I think we've mitigated this. But if the circumstances do- does come up, I think. By enacting an adjournment and ending a council meeting early, let's just make it a thing. by enacting an adjournment and ending a council meeting early, let's just make it a thing to where we put it on the next agenda so the council can discuss it.
I agree. I think one other way to look at this, which might be helpful, not to drag this out longer. But let's say you get Apple Farms is not on the agenda. And then you get caller after caller after caller cowering in saying, I love apples, I love apples, I love apples, I love apples. You might go, that's really annoying, but will it cause you to adjourn the meeting? Or is it the hate speech, is the content that's making it uncomfortable that makes you want to stop? And at the same time, if someone's saying, I love apples, I love apples, you can say, that's great, but we're not talking about an apple farm. We're talking about this. You want to change your comment? No, okay, you're disconnected. And that doesn't amount to an actual disruption. But if you come in here with apples and start hucking them around and, you know.
This is a good example.
Yes. Just trying to remove the content of speech from the discussion, even though it is why we're discussing it. It's challenging.
So any last thoughts on this? I think we have a general consensus on this. Do we need to push in?
Does the consensus include the part about a thirty day pause on Zoom?
Is there consensus on that?
No. What are your? So I like the, I like the idea that we agendize it right after. If if it becomes another incident with another board commission or this council, then I think that's when we come back to work and say, we reevaluate, okay? What do we miss? Has anything changed? Is there anything else we can do? Is their policy the same? Is there anything new in the law? I just don't think there's automatic triggers. I think it just says, we have to come back together and talk about this because this is a second incident or a third incident.
For sake of time, I agree with that. Is there a consensus? Consensus, you're good with it?
It gets agendized and we
Okay.
Re-adjusted.
All right, I think we have consensus. I think we're done with this item. And it's it's ten till, so I don't think we're going to be able to get to any other item and fully get in it through six minutes, ten minutes. Mr. Riley, I know that this is frustrating for you because you've been here. This is the third time and that's how much we love seeing you. It's not because of that, but unfortunately, I don't want to. You know, the expectation was to end the council meeting at six tonight. It is a special meeting. So we will get this back on the agenda. We did get your, by the way, your your comments, so we do have those. But we'll get this re-agendized and with that.
There's one item left, council comments on 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 number eleven.
Sorry, hold on.
Yeah.
I was trying to get through it, Alan, before you had to jump away. Take care, Alan.
It's it's under number ten. If you want to move, if you want to move council comments from the end of the meeting to immediately after public comment, that's something you can think about.
I'm fine leaving everything the way that it is for now, but if we need to, if we feel like we need to move stuff around, we can later. Okay, all right. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thanks, everybody.